Good evening and welcome. We're going to go ahead and get started. We appreciate you being here tonight, most importantly, so we can get your feedback. We are very much, as we've said in the preliminary stages of this, and that's why it's important that we hear from all of you who would be impacted by any decision of JCPS. Clearly, our board has been committed to building a middle school in the community in East Louisville. We know that right now we have middle schools that are extremely overcrowded in East Louisville, and more homes are being built by the day in the community. So it's important for us to find a spot, clearly, to build a middle school, but to find the right spot. So we appreciate you being here. We're going to turn it over to the experts on this, on my team, and they will make a presentation, and then we will obviously give you the opportunity to, so that we can hear from you. So, thank you very much for being here, and I'm going to turn it over to our Acting Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Glenn Beatty.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. Thank you, welcome. Thanks for coming out this afternoon. Thank you to Eastern High School, Dr. Herbert and his team for hosting us. Thank you very much. So, this evening, our agenda is to talk to you about the proposed purchase of land at the Echo Trail site. I will explain to you why we're here, the board policy, a summary of the proposal, and then provide an opportunity for you to provide either, those of you who signed in, to provide either oral or written testimony, and we'll get to that here in just a few moments. So, the reason that we're here is that Board of Education Policy 5.12 says that any acquisition of sites or property has to be in accordance with its long-range building program, and that we must hold a public meeting to hear comments from the public regarding the proposed sale. That's one thing I do want to stress, that there is no current proposal in front of the Board of Education to purchase property. We have interest in it, so we're here to receive public comments before making a recommendation to the Board of Education. At the table here are members of the facilities planning team. They have worked on this. I'm just, I've come in as late to be the interim, and this group has been working on this for some time, and I appreciate the work that they've done with regard to this project, to this point. So, to provide a summary of where we are, we are interested in purchasing 40 acres of land at 2605 Echo Trail for the purpose of building a new school. A picture of the plot that we were interested in purchasing is out in the lobby. And we provided 14 days' notice to the news media, in the Courier-Journal, we placed an ad that we were having this meeting. We mailed notices to adjacent neighbors, Neighborhood Association, and the council member. Tonight, there was a sign-in sheet for you to sign in. Individuals who wish to provide oral testimony, we've collected that. And we also have a third sign-in sheet in the back for those of you who would like a copy of the executive summary of tonight's meeting. We're capturing all the information that we received tonight two ways. One, we have our videographer in the back. We are capturing this meeting and placing it on the district's YouTube channel, and in addition, we will provide a written summary. So if you'd like a copy of that before you leave, make sure you sign in the back, leave your email address on that sign-in sheet, and we will email you that executive summary of this meeting when it's completed. So, the purpose of the meeting this evening is to hear and document testimony. Again, we're recording comments, and we will include those in an executive summary. So, I want to review the site acquisition. The address, 2605 Echo Trail. It is 40 acres of land, east of Echo Trail and west of Eastwood-Fisherville Road. This, for the purposes of constructing a new middle school. This new middle school is part of the district's long-range facility plan that was approved by the Board of Education and the Kentucky Department of Education in June of 2017. We amended it again in December of 2018, and we amended it again in March of 2019. So this proposal to build a school east of the Gene Snyder is included in our Kentucky Department of Education-approved facilities plan. And if this purchase were to take place, and construction were to take place, the projected school opening would be in the fall of 2022. This is a, the section in blue-green is the proposed site. This is the Gene Snyder Freeway. This is Interstate 64. This is 155 Taylor's Road. So, the location of the property geographically from an overhead view. The board policy requires us to take some considerations, to make some considerations as we consider properties for land acquisition. I want to share those briefly with you now. First, with regard to accessibility and safety, the Echo Trail site is of adequate width for bus and car traffic. The sight lines of 500 feet are attainable for entrances to school, and we have submitted this information to Louisville Metro Public Works and have received, they have reviewed this location and provided us with feedback. The size of the site is a second consideration. It is 40 acres. It's adequate size for a middle school, and the possibility of an additional school if a need arises in the future. So we have enough space to build a middle school and possibly another school on that site if we had the need to do that at a later date. With regard to the site location, the site location is free from disturbing noise and hazardous surroundings. And with regard to facilities planning, the site has adequate electric and gas service. A sanitary sewer will be built and in service before the school opens. I want to take a moment, that a few questions have come in recently with regard to purchase price and the proposed, and the proposed site. Just, it's important to note that we can't, as a district, overpay for a piece of property. We've had three appraisals, three appraisals have been completed on the property, one by the developer, two by us, and the actual appraisals were completed on the contingent that the property had sewer service. So when we purchase the property, escrow will be placed for the construction of a sewer line. So if you see differences between what the property value, PVA might assess a property for, and what we're purchasing it for, the market value or the assessed value is based upon that property actually having sewer service in place for us to hook into once the school's constructed. A secondary water line will be built to meet Louisville Water Company regulations, and the current water pressure is adequate. We have consulted with our JCPS council and determined that a fee simple title can be obtained, which means that the transaction between the Board of Education and the seller of the property would be relatively simple for us to do with a contract. With regard to the school, that's the next consideration, is that the proposed middle school would have a capacity of approximately 1,000 students. Five middle schools in this area, Carruthers, Crosby, Cameron, Ramsey, and Westport are between 88 and 100% capacity, and the average is 95%. And the elementary school enrollment in Cluster Nine is at 86%. So when you take those percentages of enrollments at schools, then you couple it with this map, which shows the blue icons that look like a home, those are pre-zoning applications that have been filed with the zoning commission, and the red dots represent active building permits. The larger the icon, the more pre-zoning permits that have been filed. And when you look at that site, and that the location is approximately here on the map, you can see that the vast majority of pre-zoning applications and construction permits issued are east of the Snyder. An additional consideration that we made was with regard to the proximity and the relationship with Floyd's Fork and the Parklands, and we are definitely aware of our proximity to Floyd's Fork and the responsibilities associated with construction in this area. And through the design phase, we will make sure that the design will reflect the character of the natural surroundings, which is topography, views, and tree lines, and informed design elements. Our district currently has existing partnerships, environmental education partnerships that include the Parklands. And then finally, we will be excited about the possibility of utilizing that proximity to Floyd's Fork and the Parklands to provide environmental education opportunities for students. It is very premature to talk about what type of school, what type of environmental program a school would have. That would take place once a school is starting to be built, a principal is named, a school council is put into place, but all of those things would happen down the road. Today, we are just here to talk about the proposed purchase of property for the construction of a school. So, with that in mind, we're going to go ahead and start, we will go ahead and start the testimony portion of this meeting, and these, the guidelines for testimony this evening are consistent with what we use with our own Board of Education, that each speaker is allowed three minutes to provide testimony. After two and a half minutes, we'll sound a bell, and that will give you 30 seconds to finish your statement. At the end of three minutes, the bell will sound twice, indicating that your time is up, and written testimony can be submitted as well. So if you, if you're reading comments, and if you want to submit your written comments as well, we'll be more than happy to collect those, and we will include those in the executive summary. Also, again, important to note that we are recording testimony this evening, and the copy of this meeting will be available on the district's YouTube channel. So, with that, we will go ahead and start with the oral testimony portion of this meeting. So, our first speaker is Jerry Miller.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Miller. I'm state representative, but I live at 17200 Ash Hill Drive in Eastwood. And I grew up in, actually, just into Shelby County, about 100 yards in the 50s and 60s. I'm here today mainly to talk about traffic, which is the biggest concern in our area. What I wanted to communicate is that there are significant number of road projects that I feel certain are going to be in the road budget, the road plan that is passed this year. I just got off the phone in the last hour with the Deputy Secretary of Transportation, gentleman named Mike Hancock, who used to be in the head of this district for the KYTC. He is aware of the project. He promised that he would make the secretary aware of it. So, I feel whether, but beyond that, whether or not the governor puts it in his road plan on, that he will deliver the legislature on January 28th, given, I think, the influence that I, well, there, there's a process for ranking projects, and every project that's in, that I've recommended in the budget got highly rated by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, as well as the Kipta, which is the Kentucky-Indiana Planning and Development Agency. Projects that have a direct impact on this area, and when I say the area, I would say south of LaGrange Road and north of Bullock County-Spencer County line outside the Gene Snyder. First and foremost is I-Move, which is a reconstruction project of the interstate system from Taylor's Road all the way to the interstate bridges, and with the major interchanges at 71 and at 64 are being rebuilt to smooth transportation. We are going to reconstruct the Taylor's Road-Popelick interchange to add lanes, widen that bridge so there are turning lanes. It should happen before the full project, which is to widen Taylor's Road to three or more lanes from the Snyder out to the interchange with Kentucky 148. US 60 from Eastwood Fire Number One to Rock Crest, that's in Eastwood, that is at the northern terminus of Gilliland, which most people know. Echo Trail kind of ends where Gilliland begins and goes to Fisher, or Eastwood. Widen US 60 to seven lanes from Old Main Street here to the Snyder Freeway. And finally, the planning money for the Eastwood-Fisherville connector with interchange on I-64. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Federico.
Hi, Bob Federico, 17007 Ash Hill Drive in Louisville. I'm currently the chairman of the Eastwood Village Council. The Eastwood Village Council was developed in, as an advocacy group in 2005 to assure that Eastwood and its surrounding areas continue to grow as great places to live. We strive to balance controlled growth with area preservation while ensuring it is planned and executed with vision, and that infrastructure needs are met to support growth in a timely manner. We represent the needs of all local residents and understand the importance of all land uses, including the village center concept, less dense neighborhood areas, as well as rural farmlands. We also support the South Floyd's Fork vision statement that Floyd's Fork watershed is a natural treasure, and that the preservation of Floyd's Fork as a healthy living creek is paramount. That vision statement says that focus must continue on the South Floyd's Fork area over the next 20 years and cover topics such as land use, community forms, transportation, connectivity, sustainability, infrastructure. We believe and support the need for new schools in the East End. Schools are not only needed today, but in order to support the nearly 2,000 new rooftops we anticipate being developed in the next two to four years, surrounding and feeding into the Eastwood Corridor. That was that map you saw. We do have the following concerns regarding disturbance of wetlands, building in floodplains, compromised reduction in wildlife habitats, cleanliness of the South Floyd's Fork waterway, traffic on small rural lanes, the tree canopy, and building in the DRO, in particular, the precedence it sets going forward for future subdivisions to encroach within the DRO. Perhaps the largest concern of all is the obvious traffic impact in the Eastwood Corridor. I define that as the US 60 from Long Run Road to the Eastwood Firehouse. Most importantly, are the serious safety concerns surrounding the US 60 Cut Off and Gilliland Lane intersection, the one that Jerry was just mentioning too. If you don't know about it, I've got a large map. Please come and look at the map. It's a dangerous intersection. This intersection has been the focus of the EVC, with each new subdivision proposed and is clearly, will clearly bear the burden of additional traffic flow generated by school buses and parents taking their children to and from the school during the already congested commuter peak windows. Multiple recent traffic studies have already deemed the intersection as failing an F-grade, and that's based on before-built volumes of new homes, and those studies do not even consider the traffic impact of the proposed school. The rating considers queue lengths, wait times, and time intervals between vehicles. The lack of shoulders, turn lanes, third lane, signalization, line of sight, and fundamentally bad geography make this one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. With all that said, should the school be proposed and proceed, all planned road projects, such as turn lanes at Johnson Road and the winding of US 60 that Jerry mentioned, State Project KYTC 058952 must be completed prior to the school's opening. In addition, it is critically important that the scope of these projects be expanded to include the complete redesign, restructure, and signalization of US 60, the Gilliland Lane intersection, and we believe that JCPS should support that.
Good afternoon. My name is Harold Hurst, and I reside at 16200 Taylor's Road in Fisherville. I've been a resident there since the late 1970s. I also chair the Fisherville Area Neighborhood Association, which has a perspective on this. I recognize the need for the schools in Eastern Jefferson County, that's very obvious. But what I would like to do is to point out a few issues that I think really must be resolved before we could support the proposal at the site at 2605 Echo Trail. Number one of these is the safety of the attending children and the public in general. The roads, including Echo Trail, Gilliland, Eastwood Cut Off, and South English Station are derived from crooked farm lanes. They are, they have poor access to the major arteries that would be necessary to bus children, and they're already congested with traffic. Current assessment, which we have gotten, is that approximately 200 cars a day use Echo Trail. With the addition of this particular school, that would rise by a factor of about 10 to 2,000 per day, and with the addition of the subdivisions that are proposed in the area, we're up to 5,000, a 25-fold increase on roads that are ill-prepared to handle this. So please consider that. The second item is the environmental damage to Floyd's Fork. The site is within the Floyd's Fork Development Review overlay, as has been noted, which, this has prevented development, incursion adjacent to Floyd's Fork for more than 25 years, and it's why we now enjoy a park system that is second to none that I've seen. A school at the site really will, must require new sewers, which will enable urban sprawl near Floyd's Fork. The increased sewer load and runoff from this development will pollute Floyd's Fork, in my opinion. The third item is the issue of cost. Jefferson County Public Schools has not indicated the cost of this, but there's some information that I can provide from discussions with people in the area. The site is part of a 231-acre farm that developers recently bought for 3.46 million. That's 15,000 per acre. A price of a 40-acre site has not been noted, but an adjacent 20-acre site in the same large tract has been offered for $50,000 per acre. Discussions with Chris Brady and the outgoing COO indicated that that figure was not out of the realm of consideration. So a 40-acre site would be some $2 million for the 40 acres. I think this is an exorbitant increase on price per acre and really shouldn't be borne by JCPS. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to offer comment. I'm Jeff Frank. I reside at 16509 Bradby Road, Fisherville, Kentucky, 40023, and I'm what they call around there, a short timer. Only been out there about 25 years. I've had the pleasure of help, and as a volunteer, to construct the Parklands, and have had the benefit of a perspective that spans a lot of time, seeing how vibrant an ecosystem Floyd's Fork is. I regret that comments here can only be limited to three minutes. So at this point, I'm going to be a little terse, but I would reflect and request that the record include all of the material before the planning commission and the planning case known as 18SUBDIV1023, 18SUBDIV1023. In addition, I would like to have this record reflect and incorporate by reference case number 19-CI-002228, currently before the Jefferson Circuit Court, number one. In addition, I have delivered comments from counsel for the Friends of Floyd's Fork to the reception table up front. They are dated 1/16/2020, and I'd ask they be included in part of the record. I think you're aware, I would hope you would be aware, that the conditions of approval that led to the approval of a 500-acre home subdivision immediately to the east of this parcel are being contested in Jefferson Circuit Court. There are a number of concerns enumerated in that case that the Friends and the other plaintiffs feel strongly about, largely centered around the issues you've heard, traffic, the environment. I can tell you, as a 20-plus-year volunteer for the Future Fund outfit that helped put the Parklands together, it's an amazing resource. We have eagles, we have otters, we have a functioning viable ecosystem, and we have farm-to-market roads that are functional cow paths with about 16 feet of asphalt on top of them. We must, as a community, figure out how to build without killing the environment we're building in. And I would urge, at this site or another, you continue your leadership that JCPS has shown in using green design, best practices, impervious pavements. We need, at the planning commission, somebody to help show the way, and whether it's this site, which I think is deeply flawed, or another in the neighborhood adjacent to Floyd's Fork, how to build with low impact, how to lead by example. JCPS could set a standard there, and I would urge you to do that. In the interim, there are valid water quality concerns, ongoing studies to help frame what capacity Floyd's Fork has to take the loads of your runoff and 500 homes. And whether you're aware of it or not, that pump station that's going on Echo Trail, it's not one 500-acre home subdivision, it's five, or 10, or 20, and we, as a neighborhood, don't know, because you all don't share those plans. I thank you for your time to offer comments, the Friends, I know the Fana folks, I know the Eastwood Village folks personally. Let's talk about a better way. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Next speaker, Steve Henry.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Steve Henry, 2550 Randstall Avenue. Let me start by saying my children go to public schools here in Jefferson County. I am a full supporter, have always been a supporter of the Jefferson County Public School System. However, you can make mistakes. In 1992, I ran as county commissioner, I pledged that there would be one clean creek in all of Jefferson County. One. That's all I wanted to do. At that point in time, Dave Armstrong, Herb Mays, and Darrell Owens and I passed what's called the DRO. That was intent to protect Floyd's Fork, the integrity, and we have done so since that time. We have opposed and fought every chance we could to preserve the DRO. It is there for a reason. It was developed by Adrian Freud on a scientific basis, one that the Jefferson County Public Schools should understand. You should lead by knowing the science of why things are done the way they are. You're in a situation where we have, over the last 20, since 1997, we have been buying adjacent land to you all. Over the last six years, we have bought land all the way from Taylor's Road all the way to your boundary, and you are the last parcel. Every time we get to a DRO, and there's a major subdivision, whether it be Oakland Hills or Little Springs, the developers gave that land to us, and that is what is now called the Parklands. Without the DRO, there would be no Parklands. And everybody says in this community, how many people go to the Parklands? How many people up here go to the Parklands? Do you all go to the Parklands? Well, it's there because of the DRO. We would ask that you respect the DRO. There is plenty of land adjacent up the hill. What you are doing, you're enriching the developers, who should have donated that land. We were in negotiations with them for the last year to be given that land, and I'm disappointed that you all have purchased it at the highest price that I ever know, I've ever known for DRO land. I have purchased over 100 parcels of land on Floyd's Fork. Never have I seen the DRO, and I may have missed one, never have I seen it go over 15,000, and we paid that. We bought their land that they had illegally logged on the crest of Fisherville, and they took that money, and they came down and bought this 300 acres that we were bidding for already. We have been outbid, that's a fair process, but we would hope that the Jefferson County Public Schools would lead by example. This is a vital piece, it is our last piece. Henry Heiser, who is a champion of the public school system, just bought 30 acres three months ago, not knowing this, that would help connect all the way from Taylor's Road, and it's called the Roth Property, goes from Taylor's Road, it actually goes to Taylor's Lake Road, all the way to the point we're at today. We ask that you look at this very closely and adjust it, remove yourselves from the DRO, go 300 yards up the hill. That land should be available to you all at the price you're paying, and we would ask that you consider that and work out the DRO system for us. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Rainey, out of 1601 Echo Trail. I was fine until I got here tonight, but to make a long story short, I have lived there for over 20-something years, rebuilt my home, loved my home, loved getting up in the morning and seeing the deer, all the wildlife, the peace and the quiet. The only thing I see now is between the subdivision of 600 homes, which is going to add at least 1,500 cars, and now a school with 1,000 students, which parents are going to be picking up and taking. And with our roads and our bridges, the way they are, I just don't think they can handle all this. It's just way too much. And, I mean, I thank you all for having us and having this open meeting, but there's just got to be a different place that have better roads, and that just won't disrupt the whole area of Fisherville and Eastwood. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Steve Porter.
Good evening. My name is Steve Porter. I live at 2406 Tucker
I live at 2406 Tucker Station Road, not too far from Taylorsville Road and the area. My history is K-12 JCPS graduate. My wife and I have four children, all were in attendance. They're all adults now, but were in attendance at JCPS, and eight grandchildren, all of whom are in or have been in a JCPS school. So, my interest is longstanding, since my early days in kindergarten. Back in the 1990s, I was involved very much in the preparation of a student assignment plan. I was on the Student Assignment Plan Monitoring Committee, back when there was all the great hubbub about possibly going back to neighborhood schools. And what I'd like to talk about tonight, very briefly, I agree with the ideas of not invading the DRO, the problems of the ecology, et cetera, but I'd like to talk about student assignment. This location is a terrible location for the student assignment plan. It's hard to get to. It's not near enough to I-64, or I-71, or 265 in order to have good bus traffic back and forth. It's probably the farthest distance from concentrations of minority population in the county. The area is basically a white area, and I'm afraid that this school would be a white school with very little evidence of minority participation because of the great distance. And I think that is a sad thing. There are many places closer to I-265, the Snyder Freeway, and Taylorsville Road that would give much quicker and better transportation to minority areas so that there could be that combination of black and white in our schools, which we must have and must continue. So, that is my concern, in addition to all the environmental concerns. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Heather French Henry?
Good evening. Heather French Henry, live at 2550 Randstall Avenue in the Highlands. I like my husband, Stephen. Very proud of JCPS. Both of our girls are products of JCPS in public school education, as well as Stephen and myself with public school education. One of our large concerns being board members of several organizations that are saving Floyd's Fork. I'm speaking on behalf of all the other board members and our partners, that being the Floyd's Fork Conservancy, Future Fund, Inc., Future Fund Endowment, and one of our partners, the Forecastle Foundation, which just shared our post about this issue currently. And one of our large issues is the encroachment upon the DRO, which my husband and others have so elegantly talked about that the visionaries over 25 years ago set forth, understanding the difficulties with urban sprawl and wanting to save Floyd's Fork. One of my big concerns, as a lover of history as well, is that the Boone Wagon Trail actually happened, was on that particular parcels of land. And so, right across from where you're proposing to build this site, not only on your site, could there be part of the Boone Wagon Trail, but right across from it, inland that the Future Fund owns, we've already started the process for the National Historic Landmark Preservation. And so, when you look at the road where you're proposing to build, you've said that that road actually is sustainable for the traffic, which I don't think many of us here believe. Plus, you will then want to encroach upon our land, which is across from you, to widen that road, to make it more accessible for that school. And I'm here to tell you, we've already started the process to preserve that land, not only for its environmental impact, but for its historic impact as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Stephen Gressit?
Excuse me, howdy. I'm Stephen Gressit. I live at 14,008 Beckley Trace. I talked with my school board member, Chris Brady, yesterday, and he suggested I come to the meeting. So, I'm leading an effort to build a new aquatic center in Louisville that involves JCPS, UofL, Bellarmine, the city, and the healthcare community. And we're not advocating locating it near this new school. We'd like to locate it between the state fairgrounds and Bowman Field, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the swimming and diving and aquatic therapy community for JCPS, with about 101,000 students in the district, and almost none of them have a place to swim. We average about 100 drownings a year in the state of Kentucky. This summer, the hottest part of the summer, we averaged about one drowning a week. And we're hopeful that this group working together, which is JCPS again, Bellarmine, UofL, and the city, could jointly work together to build and own an aquatic facility. And we've completed a study, which I've emailed to Susan, and just wanted to get this idea into the public record. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Leah Vassiliades?
Hey, good evening. My name's Leah Vassiliades. I reside at 18906 Hunt Country Lane in Fisherville. I'm also a very active and a board member of the Fisherville Area Neighborhood Association for over 10 years. I really do want to just echo all the concerns expressed already by my colleagues and friends from these associations regarding the preservation of the environment, the respect for the DRO, and quite honestly surprised to hear tonight from Jerry's comments that we don't even know until January 28th if these proposed road improvements, which we've heard about for many years, will even be approved. So, I think one thing I would appreciate is that for those who are here in support of finding another school, that they would be informed of what the consequences are that this proposed property entail. I just spoke to a friend who's here and had no idea. And also, have the taxpayers been duly noted and made aware that we are going to pay in our increased property taxes for property that you are paying triple the value of so that the developers can increase their profits? That does not sound like it's focused on the benefit of the children when you are being negligent on the traffic and the safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is S. Pickenpot?
I'm Sherry Pickenpot, 18900 Hunt Country Lane. And I just echo really what everyone else has said here. One of the things I just thought was kind of funny, though, in the considerations from you all, it says, "The site is free from disturbing noise and hazardous surroundings." Well, that's why we love it. It's because it's so quiet. We'd like to keep it that way. My husband kayaks, and I can't even imagine the pollution that's going to come into this Floyd's Fork River from this school. I mean, there's no question about it. So, just please reconsider. There's so much land for sale in the area. We would just be grateful if you would just take a step back and just do your homework a little bit more. Listen to the comments tonight. We love where we live, and we're all about safety. This pristine community that we've enjoyed, and just thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is David Kalin?
David Kalin, 2421 Tucker Station Road. Take care of our family farm that my parents purchased in 1948 and now have our fourth generation living there. So, trying to keep farming active. And welcome, school officials, tonight, and thank you, dear board members and school officials. I've read over the past year stories of East End schools being at or near capacity. If that is the case, then we see the need for possibly a new East End school in our future. Living the latter part of my life around a developing area has given me insight to how things are built. I feel the Echo Trail site is too far east of the Gene Snyder Freeway, I-265. As far as I know, the area is lacking in infrastructure, having rural roads and no sewers. And I've attached a photo that I'll turn in of a school bus coming down the middle of the road. The roads might be 18 feet wide, but they can't stay in their own lanes. The school should be located nearer I-265 where more planning effort and infrastructure already exist, which would cut down on miles traveled. A priority effort should be made to cut down on bus miles and time needed to transport children to and from school. The Arton Lane Corridor is a new road, parallel to I-265, and has already been designed to put in place, making access to a new school safer to travel to and from. Most disturbing to me is how our city is becoming more divided between east and west, between areas where taxpayer monies are spent in the east while much disinvestment occurs in the west. In 2004, the Holland Back Oakley Development Company spent $6 to $8 million putting in the sewer infrastructure to benefit a 4,000-acre area. The Echo Trail site lays outside this area. There are hundreds of acres available for sale within the new sewer area where a school could be built to have a more immediate impact now and into our future. Does building a multimillion-dollar sewer infrastructure and road improvements fall on the shoulders of the taxpayers at Echo Trail? And I've attached the whole sewer agreement and maps. Care must also be taken developing around Floyd's Fork Creek. Our community cannot afford to pollute another creek as we have done to Bear Grass Creek. A district review overlay was put in place years ago to protect the creek. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Lovelace?
I'm Tom Lovelace, and we live at 15501 Floyd's View Place, which is directly across the street from where the school will be. I want to thank the Parklands for buying the property, that they did, and save, because I'm actually in the middle of the park, pretty much. I'm surrounded by the park. It's fantastic. And I don't know how many people in here have watched an eagle be turned loose. I went and very pleased, I think this is their third or the fourth one, the Parklands have turned loose there. I get up in the morning, I have 10, 15, 13 deers in my front yard. It's absolutely fantastic. You could not live in a much nicer place than where we are now. My concern is, number one, is the traffic. It's not going to be able to handle it. That's going to be a ton of traffic on that two-lane road. The people that use that road, most of the time, are not very courteous about speed limits, at all. And you'll find a lot of the people going to the southeast, or Southeast Christian, I think it's Southeast Christian School there. It's not a fun morning going to work, a lot of times, out there. And putting this school and that subdivision out there, I think it's going to be a major issue. But my big concern is, you know, we're very big on bourbon in Kentucky, and directly across from there was Echo Creek Distillery. And part of that foundation is still there in the parks. I just can't imagine why we are using so much of Mother Nature, and it's not about education. I love education. You're putting it in a place where it has been preserved all of these years. It's kept nice. It's so enjoyable. I think that putting the school in there and the subdivision also is going to be one major, major disaster for the neighborhood in that area at all. It's going to create a heck of a conflict. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Leslie Lovelace?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Lovelace. That was my husband, Tom. We live at 15501 Floyd's View Place, which is just a little private road, right there by the Parklands barn. We're short timers, only about 25 years out there. When we bought our property, a little over five acres, it was $35,000. Then they built Locust Creek, and before we could even build a house, our property was increased about $120,000 in one year. And it's gone up, and it's gone up, and it's gone up. And like I said, we're not rich. We have a great place, and I don't ever want to intend to leave. But the property taxes that Jefferson County Public Schools continues to burden us with, it's legal extortion. It is legal extortion that you are allowed to increase our taxes any percent without it going to the board. Because when is it going to stop? You know, Indiana has a 1% tax, property tax cap. What are we going to do? Am I going to, I mean, I have a nice retirement. My husband's worked hard all these years. I feel like to pay the property taxes every year, I've got to continue to work. How am I going to pay $6,000, $10,000, $18,000 in the next several years? How is any of us going to do it? I didn't go to JCPS. I was in private schools my whole life, and that was just my privilege. But, I think that you really need to consider the roads. We drive those every day, and when they start building 600 homes, and there's dump, tri-axle dump trucks carrying 40,000 pounds of gravel along those school buses, what's going to happen? It is going to be a disaster. And the railroad tracks at Taylorsville Road, those school buses, when they stop, their ass end hangs over those railroad tracks. It is a mess, and I can't believe that you would pay what you would pay to put a public school on that kind of piece of property. And the DRO definitely needs to be preserved. My husband and I put in a swimming pool a year ago. We couldn't do anything without them out there on our ass. You know, gravel this, feed over that. I mean, they just have it done. And we had, I mean, I fought with planning and zoning forever. It was ridiculous. And you're probably just going to walk in, and it sounds like to me you've already bought the property. That's what it's, does anybody else feel that way? The way they talk? That it's a done deal? That it's already a done deal? So, those roads are not adequate. You know it. You absolutely know it. They're not adequate for the traffic that we have today. So, I would hope that you would reconsider, just like Eastwood-Fisherville Road, all those homes that were built. That thing is a mess. All that traffic, and nobody ever seems to want to really consider, you know, the runoff. It's in the DRO. It's Floyd's Fork Preservation. And that's what we, I'm a Parklands member, so I just hope that you would really consider moving the school to another place. Thank you.
Tina Halbig?
Hi, Tina Halbig, 6505 Echo Trail, Louisville 40299. I'm glad to see in your next steps that you are going to submit this to the Louisville Metro Planning Commission. But also, I'd like for you to know that Floyd's Fork Environmental Association has co-founder, we've been around since 1991. I want to furnish you a copy of the Floyd's Fork DRO that we worked on for a year and a half with a committee of 60, and public meetings were held for input. I'll also give you a copy of the Floyd's Fork DRO to look at, and also, a letter from a well-known attorney that you might want to look at, where somebody was in the wrong. And also, a copy of the statute for community facility review. And I spoke with the planning director today. As my understanding, they have no information whatsoever on this. And we do anticipate that we would get a public hearing through the Planning Commission, and that you would go before a community facility review also. I'm hopeful that you would look at the problems with the sewers, and also, that Jefferson County Board of Education and Health Department and everybody else should jump on board to try to get the newer technologies to be used here in Jefferson County to protect Floyd's Fork. MSD, they have not... MSD, they have not moved forward with these, and it's really important. We have PFAS in our water, our drinking water, and things are going into our waterways, too. There are many contaminants that could be removed with newer technologies of membrane filtration, osmosis, lots of different things like that. I would also encourage you that, and I have tried, to get them to call, this should be North Echo Trail. And the other one that is cut off should be South Echo Trail. I think it would be a great problem. It was initially many, many years ago, and I still think if even one person loses their life because somebody goes to the wrong Echo Trail, that it is a miscarriage. So I think that we would like to have the opportunity to have many more comments about the environment and the protection of Floyd's Fork Creek and its tributaries and its watershed. Those of us that have worked on the South Floyd's Fork Vision that the mayor appointed, as well as those of us who were appointed many years ago to work on the Floyd's Fork DRO Development Review Overlay. Thank you.
Jerry Miller.
I've taken my badge off, because I'm testifying as a grandfather of three, two of which are already in JCPS elementary schools, and will soon wind up in a middle school. I grew up in Fisherville, went to Fisherville Church of Christ ever since about 1951, December of 1951, when I was born. So I've seen a lot of change in this area in 60 years, 68 years. Middle schools are, is a 50-year decision. I think the life cycle of middle schools, that's our planning horizon. I know that on the distillery road, excuse me, when I grew up, it was the distillery road, not Echo Trail. So I still call it the distillery road. Nonetheless, the, it's a 50-year decision. There has not been a middle school built outside the Gene Snyder, period. And there is one, and I don't know about Fairdale, I don't know that area, but anyways, on our end, there's not been one outside the Snyder. And there's not been a middle school, period, built since Ramsey Middle School was built off Billtown Road, and it's at 110% capacity. There are no middle schools outside the Snyder, and that's where all the growth is. I'm not going to comment on the location, but I agree totally that we have to have at least a three-lane road, if not greater, running in front of this school before opening day. And I'm doing all I can as a representative, and I would urge everyone to write the governor or call the governor's office and urge them to make sure the funding is there for improvements on the roads in our area. Since the bell hasn't rung, I will say that I'm a pretty big history guy, and it was actually Ms. Henry Herod's Wagon Trail. Boone's Wagon Trail is basically US-60 Midland Trail. And it entered into, Boone's Wagon Trail entered into Jefferson County near what is now Notting Hill Subdivision. Nonetheless, a lot of history in the area, beautiful, beautiful environment we want to preserve. I did not see a deer in the wild, and I grew up here, until 1980. And if, and no eagles, no, I mean, you didn't even see red hawks back then. You didn't see coyotes, turkeys. We see all that now. We want to, we do want to preserve that. It's my job as a representative to get the funding, and I'm committed to doing that. But I would urge everyone to call their, call the governor's office and urge that road money be dedicated to this area, because as the previous speaker pointed out, the road's already inadequate for the growth we have, so we've got to get more road money. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Mead.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sheila Mead. I live at 19001 Hunt Country Lane in Fisherville. I'm a member and fan of Fisherville Area Neighborhood Association, and I'm also on the Floyd's Fork Vision Statement. I agree with everybody except Jerry, sorry, on all their comments. A wide variety, and it's interesting. When I was coming here, I'm thinking, how do the minority people get to this school? And then Steve brought it up. I mean, there's no busing out here, there's no Tark, no transportation. And it's just curious, have you even driven Echo Trail? So, okay, well, I won't belabor the point. Just really consider what is happening here. And I don't have kids in school, so trust me, I don't want school buses.
Are you going to answer any questions? Did you guys buy the property? No, no, this, again, this is... Give statement, no answer? So, again, the purpose of the meeting tonight was to receive oral testimony or written, those of you who spoke this evening, and you have copies of written statements you'd like to have included into the, after the meeting, put your name on your paper, turn it in, and we'll make sure we include that into the executive summary. No proposal has been submitted to the Board of Education with regard to the, with regard to the purchase of the property. Again, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that before we even move forward with the proposal to the board for that, we have to hold a public meeting to get, to hear public, to hear public testimony. That's the purpose, that's the purpose of this meeting this evening. So what we're going to do is, we will take the information from this meeting this evening, prepare an executive summary of this meeting. Again, this meeting has been, it's been taped, we have it attached to the, to the JCPS YouTube channel, so we have a record of it. And if you want a copy of the executive summary, there is a sign-in sheet out in the lobby. You put your name and your email address on that. When the executive summary is completed, we'll make sure that we email you a copy of that. And with that, I'd like to thank you for attending, and this concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you.